Ready to get started. The only way to get this meeting started, today's date is January the 2nd, 2024, is to tell City Common Council. If everybody could please stand to recite the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the free and democratic republic which stands one nation and one power in the heavens.
Thank you all. All right. Well, I want to welcome you all to your first, I guess you would call it maybe official council meeting, aside from yesterday's swearing in. For those in the audience in watching us, I'll just kind of introduce our council members. We have Ward One Larry Kleeman, Ward Two Mr. Brian Steen, Ward Three Philip Simpson, Mike Finley, Ward Four Gerald Gately, Council at Large, and myself as Mayor, City Attorney Jeff Haggard, and our Clerk Treasurer Connie Berger. Next item is adoption of the agenda. Is there any changes, additions, corrections to the agenda? And if there are none, I'm going to hand a motion to approve. Motion made by Mike, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Larry, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Agenda stands approved. Next item is presentations of minutes for their approval. These are from your December 4th. You all should have a copy of those distributed out last week, and there also should be a copy of those in your folder as well. Are there any changes or corrections to that?
The mayor mentioned at a prior meeting, Ryan and Mike, but just because you were not participating in that meeting does not mean that you cannot vote on approval of minutes.
Larry, do you have any changes?
There's a couple grammatical changes, but I'll get with Connie after the meeting, so nothing of any substance, so they look fine to me. I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion made by Larry, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Gerald, any further discussion? If there are none, we'll call for a vote, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes stand approved. Next item is comments of citizens, if there are any citizens that would like to make any comments, please come up to my conference, state your name and address for the minutes, please. All right. Moving on to committee and board reports, these might be a little short because I know we've got three new council members on here, so you may not have as much report or anything from committees for that, as a matter of fact, so, but we'll go ahead and start with Larry Kleeman, Ward One.
My report is fairly short this evening, but I do have some questions about, actually some follow-up from some actions that in District One or Ward One that we had requested some action on. I'm just trying to get some follow-up. The first on my list is the Obrak House.
Okay, we did report that at the Board of Works, we are going to meet this Friday at 9:00 a.m. You're welcome to be there to kind of get a walkthrough status update with Ms. Barr. I can send you an email, Larry, if you want to.
If you would, I would appreciate it.
Yes, I will.
I did, I did talk to the two adjacent neighbors and got reports from them that I'll be happy to provide to you if you want those reports, so.
Yes, I would.
Next is the Obrak, Jason?
Yes.
Jason who?
There are two adjacent neighbors.
Adjacent, not Jason, adjacent.
Adjacent.
I thought he said Jason.
No, adjacent, okay. Neighbors, I've got their input on the, on the situation. In October, I believe it was October, I'd had a request from a constituent about the traffic on 11th and Humboldt Streets, and he had requested that we consider putting up, there was currently stop signs, I believe, on Humboldt Street. He requested we consider putting up stop signs on 11th Street, and I believe Assistant Chief Flamian did a traffic study out there and made a report to the Board of Works. I was not present at that meeting, the report was made, but I subsequently talked with Assistant Chief Flamian. From the statistics he gave me, I think there's an indication that a stop sign is needed on 11th Street, and I'm just wondering where we stand on that particular issue.
It's up to this council, it's obviously adopted as ordinance, so if it's something that you'd like to see done, we can put it as an agenda in February for consideration. City Attorney can write up the ordinance for that, it has to be advertised, two weeks Connie? Once it's adopted, the sign goes up.
Once it's advertised in the paper, then the sign can go up, yes.
So that's action that the council has to take?
Well...
Do you have a recommendation?
First, we need to go to the recommendation from the Board of Works, I apologize, you're right. So yeah, we would have to do that, so I'll get that on the Board of Works' agenda for in February, our meeting, our first meeting, because we won't have another one this month.
Okay.
But he did a traffic study on that.
He did.
He did.
I don't have those Board of Works minutes with me.
I didn't.
He indicated to me there was, there was a higher than anticipated number of not only vehicles but pedestrians that crossed that intersection, and that was the concern of the constituent that contacted me that lives out there on the corner was pedestrian safety, as much as anything. He said that there was a lot of traffic that just goes flying through that intersection, so.
In the meantime, Jeff, you want, you can go ahead and draft the ordinance, and if the Board of Works makes a favorable recommendation, then we go ahead and have it added to, or go ahead and just put on the agenda with the council for that same meeting, because they follow each other, and if it passes, it passes, if it don't, it don't, but we can do that.
Humboldt, 11th.
This would be, this would be on 11th Street.
Is there a stop sign on Petzalotzi?
I don't know, Gerald.
I don't remember, I'd have to go look at it.
I don't know.
If you go to Petzalotzi, there is no stop, once you climb Petzalotzi and get to 10th, there is no stop sign, it's a two-way on 10th, and then as you proceed down Petzalotzi, I said Petzalotzi, Humboldt, I'm sorry, there's no, yeah. There's no stops on Humboldt 11th, except for sideways.
On Humboldt.
Way on Humboldt, yeah.
Yeah, but not.
I don't think there is one, you just climb the top of the hill, is there? Yeah, I think there is.
I'll have to go look, I'll look at it.
Well, we'll find out.
I don't know.
If the council gets time, go take a look at the intersection, go talk to some of the neighbors, you might want to share that constituency to the rest of the council, maybe they might want to talk to him or her, talk to the Assistant Chief, and I'll try to get a copy of that report so I can email out to the council and Board of Works for consideration as well.
I don't think there's a stop sign from Washington to Mozart on 11th, nowhere.
On 11th Street?
Yeah. From Mozart to Washington.
You're probably right.
Pretty narrow, and I mean, you've got cars on both sides, it's pretty narrow.
Yeah, you're probably right, Gerald, I don't know for sure. Okay, the, the third and final request I got is that the sidewalk in the 500 block of Main Street, Mayor, I reported this to you, there was a constituent that tripped at that sidewalk in front of the State Farm Office and basically face planted. Fortunately, she suffered no serious damage that I'm aware of, but this happened in November, and I took some pictures of that sidewalk in that area, and I'm just wondering if we can get that sidewalk fixed where it's no longer a traffic hazard.
Jeff, what's your...
Sidewalk, is this Main Street?
It is Main Street.
Technically sidewalks are the responsibility of the property owners, that's not a very popular thought with the property owners. The city certainly could repair sidewalks, my only concern is you repair one, and then anybody who has a sidewalk that is not in ideal condition is going to come asking why the city didn't repair theirs.
Okay, and I understand that, Jeff, from a legal perspective, but we spent a significant amount of money putting in new sidewalks up and down Main Street.
Correct.
Okay, and I don't think those property owners paid anything for that other than the taxes.
That's largely true, yeah.
And, and I guess what kind of refreshes my memory is we did additional concrete work up in the 400 block on Main Street, filling in those grassy areas, and I don't understand why we can't take care of an issue like this.
It is originally fixed that, didn't it? I seen them over working over there, 400 block, or something.
Yeah, in the 400 block, this is in the 500 block.
Right.
Corner of Humboldt Main. And actually, the sidewalks in front of the Post, the restaurant at the Post, I, I think are tripping hazards also. It's that old aggregate concrete, and most of them have raised a few inches or dropped a few inches, and I don't know whether we want to get into that or not. I haven't had any incidents reported to me, but I know we've had, we've had...
What there is, Larry, I'm going to interject real quick, there's a way you can actually go in and grind part of a sidewalk down to eliminate that lift tripping hazard you're talking about, and what I'll do is I'll try to reach out to some of the local masonry's, concrete corn companies, see what they recommend, because if they go in and grind that, you know, if it's a half-inch tripping hazard, and grind that down a little bit, save a tremendous amount of money, about, pretty boring or whatever, but we'll have to, Jeff, we do need to get cleared in who's technically responsible, I know, legal standpoint, we need a firm legal standpoint of really who's responsible at the end of the day, so we don't have these issues moving forward.
Yeah.
We really do need to take a certain stance and stay on it.
Sure.
One way or another, no preference to me, but...
That concludes my report, thank you.
All right, thank you. Brian?
Red, red street signs. My constituents want to know when this is going to go out, the rest of the way through town.
Jim, she was here right now, but they're working on it, they actually just took the sign equipment, they had it in the basement here, and we're making here, but I talked with him and Jim, they moved it all down to the street apartment and put it down there, but it's not going to get tore up and ruin the safe, and they're going to, they're starting to make them and get them up, so I would imagine hopefully the next month or two, they're, they're getting on top of it now, so.
Okay, but they are working.
They are, absolutely. They're a popular sign, people really like them.
Yeah, and you know, it's like, well, how come the rest of town's got it and we don't?
Well, they'll get them, it takes time, they do it during free time and...
I told them there is a Santa Claus.
Yeah, yeah.
And I know he did order some more supplies today that they've released, so I do know that he's...
She said he ordered more supplies today too, so. Any else?
Nope.
Thank you, Brian Phillips?
No reports.
No reports, all right, Mike?
Yes, I'd like to thank my neighbors in Ward Four for selecting me to represent them. I'd also like to thank my friend and opponent Lisa Patmore for graciously congratulating me. I'm pretty sure I was the only candidate to receive that courtesy. I want to hear from my constituents regarding their needs. I have heard from the breakfast group that we had, the gathering, that the cat problem over there is troublesome, and then on election day, I was able to log over there and see it is a problem. We do need kind of control, I know we're considering it, working on it, but that's the only problem so far.
Okay.
I want to hear from my constituents, those who voted for me and those who voted for Lisa, they both have concerns that'll likely improve our community. That's it for me.
Okay, I'm making myself a note, I'm making myself a note to take care of that cat issue you just talked about, okay. All right, thank you, Mike, Gerald?
I have no report at this time.
Okay, any statements or comments of the City Attorney or the Clerk Treasurer?
No, sir.
All right. We'll move on, old business, we have nothing, so we'll move right down to new business. At this time, under item A, it's the appointment of the council president. Once we appoint the council president, I will turn the meeting over to the council president, and that's where they will discuss the board appointments for council members. There are several positions that the council needs to fill, and so, is there any nominations at this time for council president?
I'll nominate Gerald.
Okay, Gerald, would you accept that nomination?
Yes, I will.
Okay, so we've got a nomination for Gerald from Philip, is there a second nomination? Any other nominations?
I'll second. I'd like to nominate Larry Kleeman.
Okay, we've got a nomination for Larry Kleeman, and so we've got two nominations.
I'll decline.
Okay, he declined, he did have to get you, all right, so we go back to the first nomination of Gerald, is there any more nominations for Gerald? Did you make one, Brian?
No. Do we need a second or nominations, or are they...
Yes, you do.
Okay, I'll second.
So you'll second for Gerald, okay, so at this time, is there any other nomination? So far, we have two for Gerald, a motion made in second. Okay, no other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, congratulations Gerald. You'll have to kind of share, I didn't have time to get enough copies, but if you look at this, what's in the yellow is mayoral appointments, and what's in the green is council appointments. Just give that copy to Gerald if you want, and Mike, you can have that one, Philip, you can share with me if you want.
Yeah.
We'll kind of just go through these page by page and make these appointments, so you want to start on page two, which we've already done, it's council president, that's for one year.
Is this the same sheet that was in our binder?
Yes.
Okay, I've got it.
You've got it.
And what we'll do, we will update this sheet once all these are done, and I'll get you a copy that you can update from your binder, so I'm going to pick up Gary and pick Gerald. Okay. All right, animal control on page three, we're still accepting nominations for that. Those are due, I think, on the 10th, and so hopefully we get those, so you'll take action on that at your February meeting.
And that's just one appointment?
That's just one appointment, it's currently held by Charlie, he is finishing out a term that he was appointed to. So now, Gerald, it's all yours, if you want to turn to the page, it starts with Perry County Development Corporation. You notice at the top, it says when they may have some of their meetings, I hope that helps you all, make sure it fits in your schedule, because they may or may not be able to rearrange a meeting time for you, if that's the case.
Okay.
So.
PCDC mayor's owner by his office, President Morton was there as, I guess, the council. I know Larry has expressed interest in that.
I have.
So I would like to nominate Larry Kleeman. I don't think, yeah, we'd have to vote on these one more.
You should.
I'll second.
So we got a second for Larry, any other for PCDC? All those in favor of Larry being on the PCDC board for one year, I believe.
Yes.
Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Congratulations, Larry.
Thank you.
Perry County Recycling Management, one-year term, Gary Morton moves on that one. Is anyone interested in being on that committee?
Gerald, just one correction, it says 6:00 p.m. when the meetings are, they're actually 4:00 p.m., that's my mistake on there, I just...
Oh, stop.
That were the, the meeting times for the recycling management.
Okay.
Just as everybody's considering, you know, their schedule, I'm not missing. I don't know, because they typically have the solid waste at four, and they have a county council at five, I think, or there's a commissioner, council, okay, so I don't, it would, it would kind of mess up their schedule, and I don't know what there's is yet, I think they're still voting on that or what, I don't...
Where's that held?
Perry County Courthouse, or the Fisher, I guess.
In the big room there? So is anyone interested in working on the PC?
No.
The recycling district? Has to be a council member. Mike, you interested? Nominate Mike Finley, is there a second?
Second.
Any other nominations? All those in favor of Mike be on that committee? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Congratulations.
Now, make sure you report cardboard prices.
You got, you got some big shoes to fill right there.
That's back in cardboard.
Yeah.
Okay, Personnel Advisory Committee, Gary was on there as council president.
No, those are yellow.
Those are yellow. Yeah, you just do the green.
Well, excuse me.
You are automatically on there as council president.
Okay. Should we go down to the Plan Commission? Is that next?
Gerald, I have, I have a question on the Plan Commission before you, you start on that, and I, I went in and did a little bit of searching on our ordinances, and I don't know if this is the current though, but what I saw for the Plan Commission is the Ordinance 338 that was passed in 1958, oh boy, that shows the Plan Commission consisting of seven members, but we've got nine members on that.
Well, two are the county commissioners, point, and maybe that's the confusion in that, seven are city, and then two commissioner would make it nine, I don't know that there was an addition later, but it makes sense, but...
I don't know.
Interested in less...
It also says that three persons in the city government to be appointed by the common council.
And they're three.
They're just not all due at this time.
Oh, okay, gotcha.
Tagged terms.
So that, that's correct.
How long are these terms?
Four years.
Four years.
But they only, do they meet as needed or...
As, largely as needed, we're scheduled once a month, but I cannot honestly remember the last time we had a Plan Commission meeting, it's been four, five months.
Is any of the council interested, have any more questions, Larry?
No.
Philip's interested in serving on there? Anybody else, we need another one. Brian, you interested, can you make it? Now, that's at 6:00 o'clock, correct?
Well, I do, I do have another question, Gerald, now that you bring it up. We show some of these, we show party affiliation, is that a requirement or not?
It is not.
On the Plan Commission, it's not?
I don't think it is.
It shouldn't be.
Yeah.
Don't remember, there's some of them that were, some that weren't, and I can't remember if this is one of them, but...
I, yeah, let me backtrack, I'd, I'd have to check Plan Commission, because it is a different creature than, than the others.
Well, currently, you, you do have, well, Tim Reed's term is, is expired, and he's represented as a Democrat by the commissioners, and you have Alaji, he's represented as a Republican, his term is not expired, then we did have one Democrat and Republican on as council members appointed, was Larry and Julie, and then the council appointed Mac as a Democrat, and Mark Laughlin as a Republican, Don Ferraro as a Democrat, Joe Wasnicki as a Democrat, and I don't know what Aaron's, I don't have a note in here what her affiliation is, Aaron has, so I can't answer that one. It's, I don't think it'd be a problem if both Brian or Philip, because it still is politically balanced in that way, I think.
Yeah, that's, that's what I was about to say, is that the whole political balance issue becomes tricky when you've got county and city representatives.
As long as, yeah, I think if the county would appoint one of each, it wouldn't be an issue.
Is, is, is it legal, I mean, why, why are we doing it? Why are we designating party affiliation?
If it's a part of a state statute, then you have to.
Do we know it is?
And I don't know that without looking it up.
I thought the Plan Commission still was, but I could be wrong, but we'll look into it.
I would ask that that be determined before we make appointments to the commission.
I think, I think that would be safe enough, because it's, number one, it's unlikely we're going to have a January meeting, so if we held that one out till next month, I can, I can get the answer to that.
And if it's not required by state statute, you know, there, there are independents.
Absolutely, yeah, yeah, that was the thought that was rustling around in my head, is it would be unconstitutional to deny independence.
Also, I think there is a libertarian political party, I mean...
Green, there's all kinds.
So I, if it's not required by state statute, I don't think we should be doing it.
That's fine, hey, sometimes less red tape is better, so I understand.
You're saying if it's not, if it's, it's okay to want what, two council members, but not, we don't have to tell, say what party they are? If it's not required by state statute?
I don't think...
I don't think they have to be council members.
Well, they do on there.
But I don't think they have to be. I would advise two council members to be on there, this is for communication back and forth as they vote.
Well, I'm not, I'm not sure about that, Jeff, now, the, the ordinance says three persons in the city government shall to be appointed by the common council. So I interpret that in city government is members of the council.
Was that 19 what, 58?
1958.
Somebody had to say a revision to that.
I'll have to check all.
You have to do this, research that, and we'll put that on our February meeting.
Yes, I will.
So we'll table the Plan Commission?
Thank you.
Till next month. Okay, now we're going down to the Technology Committee?
That committee has never met in a couple of years, I think it was formed early on when we were trying to do some things, and it would be my recommendation to dissolve that committee. Chief on it, would you feel the same? It's just, it's not been what we thought it would be and needed, and it's just, they met one time in four years.
Yep, and I agree with that recommendation, but it was established by ordinance in 2017, so I think to do away with it, we have to...
Can you prepare that for a February meeting?
It's ordinance 1120, passed February 6th, 2017, that established that committee.
Making notes.
In 2017?
Yes, and I agree, we're not meeting, it's not required, then.
We'll table that one till next month, which has not been used, makes good sense to dissolve it. The Tell City Strong Committee, is that what we're at, Chris?
Yes, sir.
That might have been done after I left, I don't know, I don't know much about that committee.
It's the Okra's Downtown, used to be called Brick by Brick, and they merged with the beautification, and Brick by Brick to form the Tell City Strong Committee, Heather Wobbin is the chairman of it, they do a lot of really good things, they put on the Christmas in the park, well, no, they did the parade, sorry, and then I think the Chamber and CB did the Christmas park, but jointly, and then they done the sweet strobes, they done a really cool Oktoberfest, I think some of you were here for that, it was really neat, highly successful, and they helped with the mayor's Easter egg hunt, there's a lot of other programs and activities, they just take good volunteers to make these things happen.
They did the bed races.
Yeah, they did the bed races for Schweizer Fest, do you all remember that?
John and Philip.
So last was John and Philip, I think it's great to have two council members on there just to be part of it.
Do they meet monthly?
Yeah.
At five?
They typically meet above German American Bank in the boardroom upstairs, there's a boardroom up there that's open to the public.
And Lincoln, oh, down...
I'm sorry, not German American, William Tell Center.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Wrong.
Would have anybody interested in being on that committee? Philip, do you want to be back on there?
I had too many obligations last year, but this year, I freed up some, I'm, I'm...
Till June.
Yeah, yeah, no, that's true. I love for it, unless someone else wants to run with it.
We need two.
I can do it, I'm going to be...
I'd say he would do it.
And one at five.
Okay. Anybody else interested? If not, I nominate Philip Simpson and Mike Finley for the Tell City Strong Committee. Is there a second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, he has carried, congratulations, that is it, I think.
That is it.
And we will have some more, but we'll have to get to there.
I, I can research that Plan Commission thing and have the answer emailed to everybody.
I appoint to the council?
Okay.
And within a week, we can get with some of you on those, mind opening.
One that's not on your list, Mayor, that you provided us, that I would hopefully give some consideration to is the ARP Committee.
Okay.
So, and you make those appointments, so...
Well, the council established that committee, right?
By ordinance.
By ordinance.
But you have all the appointments and establish all the terms of office.
Is that a committee that this council wants to move forward with? I guess I should ask that question before I spend any time on doing that.
I didn't catch it.
He was asking about the ARP Committee, there was an ordinance establishing, giving me the authority to appoint people to that committee, there's still, there's money appropriated that has not been spent, and there's money that's unappropriated, probably 130,000 or something like that. So we do have to stop some money up, so there still is work for that committee to do, if the council wants to do away with it, it's their choice, but this is a new council, so I'm letting you guys, if you want to wait a month and think about it, I know it's kind of new, you probably didn't expect that tonight, fine with it, and then come back in February and decide, yeah, or no. I can get you a copy of that ordinance if you want, so you can review it, and if, if you want to make changes to it, if you make, make appointments, that's, whatever, your Your guys' ordinance, so. Let me make a note of this real quick.
So it's gone to?
Because previously, it was myself on, Kelly was chair, myself, Danny Bowlen's no longer on, he resigned, and Connie. So. So John came and it was really down to three of us, so probably would hurt to reorganize somehow at that point, there's just three of us. I mean, it's kind of sad, but it'll work out.
We'll do it next month.
Well, I put it down for ARP committee. I'm going to email out that ordinance, so you all have it in front of you, so you can review it and decide. You want to make changes or leave it as is. It's, just so you have your information.
I have one more we need to discuss.
If you, if you want to make a note of it, Mayor, the original ordinance was eleven seventy-five.
You just say you kind of digging it out. I could have found it.
And then it was amended, ordinance number eleven eighty-five, amended ordinance eleven seventy-five.
Okay.
And then I also have, I don't know if this is right. So ordinance twenty-two-two-dash-ten regarding that. I, I don't know where that came.
That would have been a resolution.
Yeah, I know. It says ordinance, but I think it's a resolution.
Well, I'll pull all three. Sorry about the call. All right. Gerald, you have another one.
There's been, I've had some of the cemetery committee contact me. And they're trying to determine if they want to keep that committee or disband it. I mean, it doesn't really meet very often, let you know. If anything, if anything done at that cemetery, it has to come through the board of workers anyway. And I know that two of the women on there that say they're okay with not having that committee.
Well.
That's something this council has to prove.
I'll look up the ordinance and see if there is one on it. I'm sure there is, and I'll email it out to you guys. You'll get a lot of emails, so get ready. Don't get confused. I'll send them separate emails, so you'll go. I'll put that on our February agenda for consideration, and you can talk to. Currently, on this cemetery committee was Gary Morton, he was council. It's Paul Ramsey and Jaycee Bash.
And Alvin.
And Alvin.
You all get a chance. Mike and Brian. Talk to them or go out and visit with these departments and get a feel how they do that. I know you work every day. It's hard. I agree. It's good to take a.
I've had a similar conversation. I was contacted and that that committee rarely meets.
Rarely meets.
And the meetings are not very productive.
No.
So.
We'll look it up and we'll do something next month.
And if Mike and Brian, I know, Gerald, you're new, but you know a lot of how this works, but each are brand new, so it's the first time on council. If you want me to set up a time with the department heads where you can go meet with one of them, like Waste Water, Chris Toofman, and learn the process and actually visit the facility. I need the council, I'm going to go back for refreshers, I'd be happy to set up a time and a day for like, go there, spend two or three hours and maybe spend a couple more hours with the Tels Electric and just kind of get the know of how the operation works. Anytime you want, you just tell me when and I'll, I'll schedule it and coordinate that.
Mr. Gerald, he reached out to us already on maybe that same.
Oh, good, okay.
I mean, you have the right to go down there and do it.
Yeah, you can go down.
It's good to learn if you don't know how it works.
Yeah, when they come to ask for you for something and you've never been there, it's kind of.
I'm kind of planning on doing that in February, get some time.
Yeah.
January's kind of full now.
When we, summertime with Black Forest Water Wells is a good time to go see that process.
Waste Water is interesting. I tell you notes, is Dispatch. Do you ever take time, go down and see Dispatch? Chief will tell you. You really want to see it, go down there when there's a storm. I was down there and we had a big storm one time and these phones, they, they were quiet, but they were, they ring a little bit, people losing their power and, you know, tree down here, there, whatever. Just your normal, you know, calls, but go down to Dispatch. That's one of our most expensive parts for budgets, you know, the police department is, and take time to go down and look it up and too. It's really interesting. They all are, you know, it's true.
I'll turn it back over to you.
Okay, all right. Next up, under new business, item C, solid waste fee, edit funds. There's going to be probably a lot of discussion on this, so I'm going to try to hopefully keep it real then. I don't know how, but we'll figure it out. Randy Coe, council or commissioner, president, also is on the solid waste board with myself and several others. He has a, an option and an idea to do this. I did distribute it out to you all. I think I came in on Friday and leave out a copy of the interlocal agreement, so you all should have a copy of it to review it, so you have that. You also should have, I, stay part of accounts, this is kind of bounce back and forth. And so I sent out what they said, so you have that for your consideration. And I think, is that all I said to you all, was those things? But I just wanted you all to have the information. You might have questions for Commissioner Pollock, that's why he's here. So if you have questions, again, this is a council decision, this is not my vote by any means. But I just wanted to give you all the option to have your discussion, and if you have questions for Commissioner Pollock, I'm sure he'd be happy to try to answer them anyway. So what kind of questions does everybody have? I don't know if I have one.
Well, yes, there is.
Okay. You're going.
Let me, I'll start off with, with the discussion. And let me distribute first as part of my discussion, which should be enough for each person that I have on those. And a lot of these questions are somewhat rhetorical. But I've broken it down into some general remarks and then some remarks about the agreement itself. And then about the fairness of the forty-five dollar fee. And about the fairness, fairness of using edit funds. And I'll read my notes basically, and we can, we can talk about any of this that you want to talk about. But it's my understanding that, and I think it's referenced in the proposed interlocal agreement. That solid waste is a county responsibility. It was established, I believe, in nineteen ninety, so it's been around for thirty-some years. It's a county responsibility, just like EMS and the jail. Tell City's a part of the county, and Tell City residents pay city taxes in addition to county taxes. What's being proposed is for Tell City residents to pay twice for the service provided. So if we adopt this, what's next? Will Tell City residents be asked to pay extra for ambulance runs to Tell City? Will Tell City residents be asked to pay extra for Tell City residents who are in the county jail? Solid waste is a county service. Tell City provides curbside recycling. And I think, Mayor, and you can correct me if I'm wrong on this, I believe we have, every other week, we have four people doing the curbside recycling. Is that correct?
Yeah. And after they pick up trash, they go, there's a separate truck that goes in front of the trailer that separates the bins and picks up cardboard first, and then they follow up with picking up plastic, glass. Steel cans, whatever.
So there are four people every other week that do that curbside recycling, which is a great service for Tell City residents. The solid waste, the recycling district, they provided the trailers. We have two trailers, correct?
I think they provided the trailers in one truck, but I, maybe, I don't know.
Okay.
I feel like there's a truck involved somewhere.
But they don't pay any of the wages of the Tell City employees that do this work, do they? Okay, so Tell City's providing that service, which provides materials to the solid waste, the recycling department, which generates revenue for solid waste. But Tell City taxpayers are paying salaries for that curbside recycling, and it's a great service. I'm not saying we should discontinue that service, but Tell City residents are paying for that. What I've distributed, you know, the first page, this was a report that was prepared by the county auditor in October of twenty twenty-three, when the county council was going through their budget discussions. And it shows the estimated ending balance for twenty twenty-three, the estimated revenue for twenty twenty-four, the budgeted expenditures for twenty twenty-four, the estimated ending balance for twenty twenty-four. And then it shows the percentage of annual expenditures on reserve. I've highlighted two funds that the county have in this, LIT, which I assume that's the local income tax. The county had a balance, an estimated balance at the end of twenty twenty-three of two million, six hundred and twenty-nine thousand, eighty-five dollars. They budgeted sixty-five thousand dollars for twenty twenty-four. And so their estimated ending balance for twenty twenty-four is two and a half million dollars. The economic development income tax, which is what we're talking about in this proposed agreement. The county had a balance, estimated balance at the end of twenty twenty-three of two million, one fifteen, eight twenty-six. Their estimated revenue is one million plus. They budgeted the estimated revenue, so they're showing an ending balance, an estimated ending balance of twenty twenty-four of the two point one million dollars. So when I look at these figures, the county has over two million dollars in edit funds in the bank. And under this proposed agreement, they're asking Tell City residents to pay a hundred thousand dollars toward the operation of the solid waste fund. And the question I have, one of the questions I have, is why use edit funds? I've been told that ninety of the ninety-two counties in Indiana support the solid waste operations through property taxes. So Perry County is one of two counties in the state that doesn't use property taxes to support solid waste. Why the rush? Why the rush? We've been operating solid waste since the nineteen nineties. This proposal, as I understand it, was a last minute addition to the agenda of a solid waste meeting in November, late November. Then it was added to the commissioners' meeting as a last minute agenda item in December, with only two of the three commissioners present. Now Tell City's being asked to sign a hundred thousand dollar agreement that binds the city for a year. And as I read the agreement, perpetually reviews, renews every year unless the city gives the county a three-month notice of withdrawal. So they're giving us a few weeks to make a decision that we can't get out of unless we give them three-month notice? Why the rush? Why the rush? The agreement itself, at least the one that's been presented to us, instructs the county auditor to withhold the city's share of edit funds off the top. We've been told by the state board of accounts, the county cannot withhold our share of edit funds unless we consent. They can't arbitrarily withhold the edit funds that are to the city unless we agree to it. Even if we consent, as I understand it, the state board of accounts is requiring accounting procedures to be used, which I believe, Connie, you told me that you currently can't do those accounting procedures that the state board of accounts will require.
Right. I'm not sure that our system will let us do it the way that they're saying we would do it.
Okay. So we would have to change our system?
Correct.
And we don't know what that would cost.
Cost, correct.
Okay. Earlier, I had, I think of the last meeting, I can't recall, one meeting. And I, I gave you in your handout that I distributed to you from twenty twenty-two Indiana Code, Title Six, about taxation, the permitted expenditures of the economic development, for economic development purposes and the use of revenue. And there's seven items listed there. I'm not going to read through these again. But I mean, the very last item says for any lawful purpose for which money and any of its other funds may be used, so. Kind of add an add-on. It says, yeah, we can use the edit funds to support solid waste or basically do anything we want to. But that's not the primary purpose. And I don't believe that supporting the operation of the solid waste district fits the legislative intent of edit funds. I've not seen our proposed edit plan for twenty twenty-four, and Mayor.
I actually brought my copy. I've, now, this has not been filed, but if it, I mean, I do need to get it out. I've had this prepared since October, been working on it, had it done. So this is not an official file, so don't like take this to the bank yet.
I understand.
There should be a copy of that. Okay. But, you know, in it, I, you look at the top, how I, you do the PCDC contract and so forth, and what plans are for this. You know, this can be amended. So if the council votes to do the hundred and one thousand solid waste, you just need to let me know. And I will amend this, and I'll have to make cuts, whatever. So I just want you to have that. This is, some of these things we can't really cut.
Yeah.
I mean, I can cut flood wall and stormwater improvements, which we're trying to use in backup generators. The one that you cut the most is improvements and maintenance for equipment facilities. You know, we was trying to use some money for the sports complex and that, so that could be cut. The N dot sixty-six sidewalks, those really can't be cut because they're budgeted for years of money that accounts to pay that for that, our portion of the grant.
And that, and, and let me just add to that, because that's in, again, my district. But that's scheduled to be implemented in fiscal year twenty-six. And that includes, that's building a sidewalk on the east side of Highway sixty-six from Washington Street to William Tell Boulevard. And that's being paid predominantly with federal and state funds, but the city also has to provide some matching funds, which can be used edit funds.
Yeah.
In addition to that, the city's committed to building a sidewalk on the north side of William Tell Boulevard.
And that comes under the streetscape improvements.
From Highway sixty-six to Zurich Way. So that's part of that project. That has to be done if we, if we want a sidewalk.
You, you can't really, you could cut those, but you'd act a project by doing that.
Yeah.
Paving could be cut. I know N dot just increased the community crossings from a million to a million and a half. I'd hate to see that cut, but they did budget it, you know, sixty thousand, which isn't a lot. Streetscape could be cut some, but not much because of the sidewalk project. The one that really cannot be cut is the Tell City Economic Development, that's the forty-five, that goes into funding, part of salaries out of that, for that. Various projects and professional services, that would be one that could be cut. That's where you could pay engineering fees and, and others, you know, things like that. The item H, N dot Tell Street Streetscape Project, while that is still young in its development, it has been approved.
Scheduled for fiscal year twenty-eight, I believe.
Correct. Yeah, I would not recommend cutting those. But it's whatever you guys decide. I do need to file this soon, and I can, but if I need to amend it, it's no big deal.
Okay.
And you make it happen.
Thank you for providing this, Mayor. It's the first time I've seen it, but.
I'm just trying to give you all the tools, so you all can make the best of it.
Okay. I also have some, some additional items, which you may have mentioned some of these, but I believe we used edit funds to purchase the new far truck. Did we not?
Edit reserve, yes.
Well, edit reserve or edit funds.
Yeah.
And so those are funds going in the edit.
We projected to put seventy thousand back. That truck was about a half a million.
Okay. I, I've been told, I think, Far Chief Loney told me that we will need to, within the next, any kind of hedge, within the next couple to four years, we may need to replace our ladder truck. That will be an expensive.
They're probably about a million dollars.
Yes.
Maybe even a little cheaper.
They'll never touch it for a million.
So Mayor, and you mentioned that we use it for matching funds for all the street paving projects. I. I, some of the future projects that may not be in your plan now, but may come into play is the demolition and cleanup of the former Perry County Hospital. I know we have a grant application in now that's pending. What if that grant isn't approved? That site needs to be cleaned up, okay? I think edit funds could be used for that. I'm not proposing that, but I think edit funds could be used for that. You mentioned, Mayor, the sports complex. Edit funds could be used for that. We wanna do some work at Dennis Crest Park. Edit funds could be used for that. I understand there's a possibility of a new hotel that we've been talking about for several years, and I think that has potentially reemerged.
It's progressing.
Okay. I've already mentioned the fire truck. Could edit funds, if, if we have to, in fact, demolish the Obreck House, if that's the outcome, I don't know that that's gonna be the outcome, but that's been, we've been dealing with that for probably ten years. I'm assuming we could use edit funds to demolish, demolish that house. I'm assuming, based on, we could use it for anything, that if we wanted to, we could use edit funds for a second school resource officer in the schools. So we had an officer in the elementary school, and we had an officer in the junior, senior high school.
I'm not sure on that. I, I like the idea, but I don't have the fun that part yet. That's, I'd have to research that one.
Chris, it says, the last item, for any lawful purpose for which money and any of its other funds, other funds, the city's funds, may be used. I mean, the same phrase that you're using or posing to use for solid waste, in my opinion, could be used for a school resource officer if we chose that. And I didn't take the time, but we have a five-year comprehensive plan that we adopted a couple of years ago. I haven't taken the time to review that document, but I'm sure there are many projects in there that edit funds could be used for. Now, I just wanna talk a little bit about the fairness of the current forty-five dollar fee. By the way, that amounts to twelve and a half cents a day. I was gonna bring in thirteen cents and put it on the table, but I, I didn't. It's twelve and a half cents a day, that forty-five dollar fee. I do think there is a fairness issue with how the, the fee is assessed, because as I understand it, Wapaka, Walmart, McDonald's, Long John Silver's, Logos, Circle S, all pay the same forty-five dollar fee as any Tell City resident would pay. To me, that doesn't seem quite right. Also, I've been told that the Tell City schools pay a single forty-five dollar fee for the administrative office. That doesn't seem quite proportional to me either. The Perry County Hospital pays a single forty-five dollar fee. I don't know if the county jail provide pays a forty-five dollar fee or not.
The city does. City Hall pays one, so I would assume.
Okay, I, Chris, I know that. I, I don't know if the county jail does or not, though. It seems, I mean, with the number of prisoners that they have. My understanding is that nursing homes pay a forty-five dollar fee regardless of the number of beds that they have. And I don't know, does, if Branchville Prison pays any fee? These are all, in, in my mind, entities that create solid waste. And many of them are paying the same fee that you pay Mike for your home.
A couple that Jared reads very.
Exactly. So I, I think some studying needs to be done on that. The other opposition that I have to paying the solid waste district, Tell City residents a second time out of edit funds, is the fairness of moving costs from, that's currently paid by owners to employees. As I mentioned, I mean, Walmart pays a forty-five dollar fee as a property owner. And we're now asking, what's being proposed in this, we transfer that fee to the employees of Walmart. Because Walmart doesn't pay an economic development income tax. Edit taxes are collected on wages, employee wages. So you're shifting the burden from the property owners to the employees. Edit taxes are not collected, that I know of, on investment income, on stock dividends, on interest income, on rental income. It's collected from the workers' wages. So what's proposed is that we shift the burden from property owners to workers. Where do we go from here? I believe this is an issue that we need to study. And study it during twenty twenty-four with everybody, with each entity having input into a proposed plan. See what other counties are doing, similar in size to Perry County. And how our county plan may be improved. Can it be improved? Yeah, I think it can be improved. I don't doubt that. But I believe it's unfair to Tell City residents to sign this interlocal agreement. So for those reasons, I will oppose it.
Randy, you want to respond to that?
I'll go through the process of how this all evolved. We were at a solid waste lady, and Chris brought up the fact that the fairness issue on our forty-five dollar charge, a hotel needs to pay forty-five dollars per room, as Larry mentioned, all these other things pay the same ones. So with him saying that, why, where's the logic at that started this forty-five dollar fee? How did it get where it is today? So I asked to see what I can find that. I struggled. I talked to Greg Garber about trying to get data out of the solid waste system, and he said he did it on trial. He went out there, then over the weekend, he contacted me, and he tells me that I got part of it out, but he said their software is late, late nineteen-nineties. We can't get it transferred over to those freight ships. Can't figure out what's going on, or what's really going on. At that time, I thought, going through the process, and I welcome anyone of you who wanna step up and start telling people why they pay forty-five dollars, or why you need to pay more than forty-five dollars, or why this service is important. Larry, it's correct. It's county service. County, since twenty seventeen, we don't want to acquire to have. So we can pull a plug on it any day now. What we don't wanna do is turn our county into a junkyard. We wanna provide opportunities for people to recycle. So, so, I looked at that, and in the difference between twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four, we get two hundred and one thousand, approximately, in additional edit money. I looked at what they were collecting, two hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars is what they collect. If we cut out the postage, the printing, the clerical, the need to take people to court. All of these fees, keeping it in office, even at, at the annex. We can eliminate all of that. So I propose, we'll provide three hundred thousand, and that's about net to what they would give with collecting these fees. So if we just take the additional revenue, additional revenue, edit is not coming because we're prospering, it's because, as you remember during the pandemic, wages at McDonald's went from in the seven, eight, nine dollar range up to as much as fifteen.